I'm going to open the meeting again. I am going to take my mask off temporarily so that you can hear me over the speakerphone. And we've separately put it back on when I quit talking. We opened our meeting at 6:00 PM, then went into executive session in which we discussed the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of a public body and the chair so declares. And any and all collective bargaining associations in the town of Harwich. We discussed three separate issues which are ongoing and will require some follow-ups. So we'll be reporting out on those actions later. We moved out of the executive session about two minutes ago. We're back now into open session and I'd ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God.
One nation under God.
Moving next then is a COVID-19 update, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm going to hand it directly over to Megan Eldridge, our Public Health Director. Megan?
Hi, Larry. Hi, everyone. Everybody hear me?
We can.
Okay. So since your packet information was put together on Friday, we have had five additional cases over the weekend and two cases just this afternoon. So our total is up to 195. And we've had, we're currently tracking 17 active cases. That's the highest number of active cases we've seen so far. So even in the surge time of the spring, we didn't have this many active cases outside of a long-term care facility. So it is concerning. We are seeing numbers increase daily and not just in Harwich, throughout the county, we're seeing bigger numbers than we have over the summer. And some of our numbers, our daily numbers are bigger than they were even back in the spring. So we're seeing our positivity rate is increasing and our incidence rate is increasing. We have currently an incidence rate of 5.7. Last week it was 4.5 and this coming Friday, I anticipate it being even higher than that with the number of new cases we're seeing every day. We will most likely move out of our comfortable gray color on the incidence map and either turn yellow. And depending on how the next few days go, we may even turn red. It's unfortunate. It is community spread at this point. When we talk about community spread versus non-community spread, we are talking about where we're getting the infections. And it's not just related to healthcare workers any longer. We're seeing it spreading in unknown settings. So we have positive cases that don't know where they're getting it from. We do know where some are getting it from, but we're seeing just unknown community spread of COVID-19 throughout Barnstable County and the Commonwealth itself. Barnstable County had a record high of 138 new cases on Saturday, yesterday, and today we were 33 and 34 new cases. We're not sure about that 138. We think it might be a data dump kind of error where they have some data that they weren't sure where it belonged. Maybe it didn't have an address or information that was complete. And then once it is complete, they kind of push it all off at once. So it's possible that that 138 includes cases that were positive perhaps during the week or the week before, and they weren't actually all resulted out in that one day. So the county itself is looking at an increase in positivity. We are, the county of Barnstable is, has an incidence rate right now of almost seven. So that's higher than we want to be. It's higher than we've been. And we do see quite a, quite a pattern with holidays. We're still kind of coming off of that Halloween holiday with positives that have turned into cases that are positive, giving it to even more people. So we're seeing spread from a spreading event like a party and now it's spreading throughout households. We've had two restaurants, a dental office, a physical therapy office, and two schools affected last week, and one worker at our Wingate Long-Term Care Facility and one at the Maplewood. So we're seeing cases just in all different settings. One thing that the Department of Public Health did do last week is change their quarantine guidelines for asymptomatic close contacts. So a close contact is someone who has been within six feet of a known positive case for 15 cumulative minutes. It doesn't have to be all at once. It can be five minutes here and there over a 24-hour period. And if you are a known close contact, you have now the option to test out of quarantine instead of staying in quarantine for the full 14 days. You now have an option of getting tested at day eight of your quarantine and getting the results a couple of days later. If they're negative, you can opt out of quarantine at day 10. So that shortens that window of people not being able to go to work or going to school. So it's backed by scientific evidence. Department of Public Health is in agreement that this is an accurate way to control the spread of COVID. If you're an asymptomatic close contact, you have this option now. Other things that were in the report, Barnstable County has gotten some money to have a few testing sites put around the Cape. We may be able to see them as early as next week. One will be at the fairgrounds in Barnstable County that's on the Falmouth Mashpee Line. And then another permanent site will be somewhere else on the Cape. We're not sure yet. And they're trying to get a mobile testing site also. So these will be great options for people that don't have insurance or don't have a primary care provider, don't have a referral, they're not quite stop-the-spread sites that you see off Cape that you can just kind of go and get a test at any time. These sites will, you'll require an appointment, but they will take asymptomatic and symptomatic people. So that's a great thing. We are lacking testing sites on the Cape. And the last thing I wanted to bring up was the travel order. As expected, Maine and New Hampshire are added to the, they're no longer a lower-risk state. So they're added to the states that we need to quarantine when we get back from. So right now, just in New England, it's Vermont and they have their own travel advisory. So they don't exactly welcome us, the higher-risk state residents into their state. So travel is very limited right now unless you adhere to the travel order, which is to get tested with a PCR test 72 hours upon arrival back into Massachusetts or quarantine for 14 days. So I know that affects a lot of people's travel plans, especially this week with the big holiday. But public health officials are urging people not to travel for unnecessary reasons and to limit your gatherings to your close family, people in your household, people within your existing bubble. Don't expand your bubble. It could, it could turn out in the worst possible way. So we are urging people to just take it easy, have a Zoom Thanksgiving, maybe get some to-go bags together for family and friends that you usually sit around the table with. It's going to be a tough, tough Thanksgiving this year. Happy to take questions from the board.
Thank you, Megan. I wish to get Joe one comment before we move Cindy on the line, and that is, is that as you point out, things are not going in our favor. It could get worse before it gets better. And in that regard, you note that we've been changing as well. We had remote last week. We decided to come in this week. And now we're reassessing with you and Joe and meeting the rest of the department heads what our best action is going forward to maintain safety. So we're unfortunately, most likely, we'll see some changes. We're talking to all town people to keep our options open, show flexibility, and still serve the public as much as we can. So that's the chore that I'm having Joe and you're having discussions going forward on. So I just wanted to let the public, everyone watching this, that we're trying our best to keep functions going and still be flexible to take the steps necessary. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Megan, I just wanted to ask you something because it's been a while since the very beginning of all of this. Let's say people do go and go out of state, visit on Thanksgiving, and then come back and perhaps unbeknownst them, there was somebody at that dinner that was COVID-positive. Did they get the test the next day? Is there any delay for incubation period for this or will it show up like immediately if you take a test the very following day?
They're telling us it's about day five after exposure that a test will be the most accurate. So if you've been told that you are a close contact of someone who tested positive, you need to quarantine regardless of getting a test right away. And it's best if you wait until day five of your last date of exposure to get that PCR test. If you get it tested too early, you may not have enough of the virus to show a positive result. If you wait too long, you, what's the point anyway? You just have to finish out your quarantine. So we, we want you to wait until at least day five to get a test. So between day five and day eight is the best time.
Thank you. Ed?
Well, Megan and Joe, I know you guys have been looking at this last, last spring when this came about. We, for all intents and purposes, shut downtown hall and a lot of, a lot of work wasn't possible to get done and a lot of services that folks needed couldn't be delivered. Given how this is starting, the not good look forward, and it may, after this holiday or heading into Christmas, change drastically, I'd like, you know, I urge you to look ahead and develop a plan amongst the town employees so that if we do have to drastically contrail access to town hall, at least we have a system in place that will keep functions moving and keep people being able to get the services they need rather than the complete shutdown that we did last spring. And, you know, and have that plan ready to be put into effect as soon as it's warranted.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond first and then certainly defer to Megan. As I've said before, Megan and her entire team have been working for the past several weeks and certainly throughout the entire pandemic to evaluate courses of action that we've had to take in the past. And this board has supported us for any efforts that we have to do in the future. As you recall, you authorized an expenditure through our CARES Act reimbursement, which was federal money that was available. So we've taken steps since the springtime. Megan and our team continue to evaluate with the department heads what steps need to be taken next, if any, and we have a greater technological footprint to rely upon if we have to retreat on any of the current activities that we have. But I appreciate your directive and your, your comment on that because what we're hearing tonight is that it's entirely likely that we're going to need to take some measures that were not as drastic as the spring, but not as hopeful as the summertime. Megan, do you want to talk about the work that you've done with the department heads?
Sure. The last two and a half weeks, I've met with each department head, aside from police and fire because they're awfully special and don't get to change their work models at all during an emergency. But all the other department heads, my assistant Katie and I have met with them, gone over their technology needs, gone over their day-to-day operations to see what they need in order to work most productively and most effectively during maybe a remote option. We're looking at several different options, whether it's the in-person that we're doing now during low transmission times or a hybrid model where people who are able or departments that are able to work remotely are able to work remotely, whether that is at their homes or another location that allows for greater social distancing. And then a third model would be kind of a skeleton crew model that one person per department would be in, obviously, to allow for business to take place, would still be able to be open to the public as long as there isn't an emergency order from the governor telling us otherwise. We don't want to halt business. That would never be a local decision. It would just come down from the governor's office. So a third model would be mostly remote. But we, we've worked out plans for everything in between and I think we're pretty confident in being able to do most government functions remotely, at least in the short term.
Okay. Thank you, Megan. Joe, we'll go on next into Cindy.
Yeah, Megan, unless you had anything else to add, we then move on to the update reflecting the support of the business community.
Good evening, everyone. Larry, just a quick question. This will depend on what I go into tonight. Do you have a meeting next Monday night?
We don't? We do not? We're not scheduled?
No. Okay. I'm going to have everyone refer to the website in light of what has just been told to us regarding the holidays. We do have some information on the Chamber website, but I may need to relook at some things. I will get with Megan and Joe on that. The one thing I do want to bring up to everyone is a change of location for the 2020 Harwich Fire and Police Homeless for the Holidays. This year, instead of Brooks Park, it's going to be here at the Chamber. It's going to be a drive-through drop-off situation, similar to what they've done over the years at Brooks Park. But I did let Brad know, I think he's working tonight, that I would mention this tonight. The rest of what's happening for the holidays, I will just refer everyone right now to the Chamber website and I'm going to keep it short and sweet like that for tonight.
Thank you, Cindy. Ed?
Cindy, do you have a date for the homeless for the holidays?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ed. I was thrown by Megan's announcement, so I had a whole two pages of stuff to say. The homeless for the holidays will be December 4th through the 6th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Cindy. Any other comments, questions? We move next to public comment.
Mr. Chairman, and I know we have Fire Chief Dave LeBlanc on the call, and I know you had contacted him about an update on some actions by one of our own over the weekend.
Thank you, Dave. I did want to invite you and Josh Ford to comment on the, on the rescue this, this weekend from the burning car.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. It's not often that we get an opportunity to celebrate our own. And as you can see, we kind of stacked the meaning here because this would be the kind of thing that the Griffin Room would be full of Harwich Fire personnel. Friday night about 2015, 8:15, we got a report of a car accident on Route 6. Originally reported as a rollover. Subsequent information on the way in that the car was on fire in the woods. Firefighter Ford was with his family in his personal vehicle driving to Orleans and happened upon the accident. He immediately called dispatch and reported that the vehicle was in fact on fire and that there was somebody in the vehicle. Prior to my arrival and the first two companies' arrival, Firefighter Ford with the assistance of a civilian who we had not identified, went to the vehicle. Fire was coming out from underneath the vehicle. The gas tank had ruptured. He was unable to access the driver's side of the vehicle, took the jack because the trunk had popped open out, smashed open the rear window, got the door open, and was able to get the driver out of the vehicle, escorted back to the rest area. At the time, the engine had arrived and I was right behind him. The car was fully involved, flames 30 feet in the air. So truly Josh saved a life that night and we're all here tonight to recognize that effort. No protective gear, no protective hose line. He did what, you know, potentially we're all called to do while we're on duty, but he did it in his personal time with his family in the car. And truly Josh went above and beyond and it's worth recognizing.
Yeah. Josh, are you online?
I am, yes.
I guess Josh isn't.
Oh, he's there.
He's there?
I'm here, thank you.
I'm sure now is you have to say a few words.
Excellent, excellent. I appreciate the accolades for sure. Like, like, like the chief said, there isn't a lot of opportunities for us to recognize our own personnel for things like this, especially when they're extraordinary. And it's nice to see the amount of people and the support of our department. I think it goes a long way for our department. We have a lot of good people and we support each other very well. And, you know, a lot of people have said, you know, great job and so, so many other different things. I've missed a lot of them because I don't have a lot of the media aspect as far as the news. But, you know, and, and, and one thing I always said is thank you. You know, I guess I tend to be a little bit humble, but also that I'd like to think with our department and, and the personnel that are in it, that anybody else would have done the same, same actions that I did on that particular evening.
I think, Josh, that certainly all the accolades are well warranted. I also agree with you that our best people become police and fire. And you're typical of that, of those people. We sometimes forget how, how important your job is with how you do it so unselfishly and without fear of your own safety. And very proud of, very proud of your actions.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're a little bit modest there, Josh. You made the national news on NBC News and on Fox. That's the national news.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I've heard more and I honestly think the most, the most awkward thing is the amount of people that have reached out to me as a result of it. And then there's been a few numbers, I think three or four, that messaged my phone where they said, thank you, great job. And I'd be darned if I knew who they were. And you're like asking because you'd like to know who's reached out to you, but you don't want to be rude at the same time and saying, hey, who is this? You know, but it's nice to hear from so many people, especially ones I may not particularly recognize.
Well, if you start selling autographs, that may be a step too far.
I doubt that's in, in the plans, for sure.
Any other comments or?
Well, let's do it again.
Thank you.
Good party, Josh.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else for public comment? Ed?
Well, this is, you know, given the season and the pandemic, we're going through one of the services on Cape Cod that has taken, taken it in the shorts is the blood donor program of Cape Cod Healthcare. The donations are down significantly, but for those of you in, in town that are willing to, this coming Monday at our own public safety facility, they're doing a blood donor collection day. I've signed up and I urge those of you also to sign up. The blood supplies are low and it's a time of year where we expect the need to increase.
Ed, how do you sign up?
You can go on the blood donor site on Cape Cod Healthcare.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Do you have Michael?
Yeah, I just want to take a, take a moment to extend our thoughts and prayers to Trooper John Lennon, who was shot the other night in the line of duty in Hyannis, state trooper. Going to work, not expecting anything like that, pulled a car over and was shot in the line of duty. So thank our public safety for the wonderful job you have and really extend our thoughts and prayers to Trooper Lennon's family and himself.
Thank you for that. Well said. Next on the agenda then is new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Link, VPW Director, I have about 50 seconds of good news, if I may.
Please.
I'm very pleased to announce that National Grid has completed the four weeks of paving and the utter chaos that ensued in traffic has been completed this past Saturday. They still owe us some line painting, a punch list, and some lowman seed in the spring. But essentially, Harwich received approximately $4 million worth of paving, 9.5 miles for free due to us tolerating this project over the last four years. I think that's very good news and we're very pleased with the, with the final product.
It's good news in several respects, the financial and the new roads, but also that they're gone.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Link. Any other public?
Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment? Next then is new business. Joe, I'll turn this over to you since I think you're, you have staff here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will directly turn it right over to our town engineer, Griffin Ryder. As you recall, your meeting last week, he informed us that he's going to be giving this update and seeking public input on a proposal for sidewalks from Sacquetucket Harbor to Harwich Port. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd turn it right over to our town engineer.
Hello, Griffin. We look forward to your presentation.
Hi, everyone. And I'm going to duly turn it over to Link Hooper. Link has been involved with this quite a bit longer than I am. We're both very involved right now, but Link's going to kick this off and then kick it over to our consultant and then we'll be able to answer some questions. So I'll kick it over to Link Hooper.
You're too kind, Mr. Ryder. Thank you. As you know, this has been a longstanding request to build a sidewalk on Route 28 from Bank Street to Sacquetucket Harbor, beginning in 2015, when the Board of Selectmen wrote Mass DOT requesting that a sidewalk be constructed there. At the time, we received a letter back that was very favorable from Mass DOT, saying that they see the project request as viable and they would construct one the next time they're doing any maintenance on that stretch of road. Unfortunately, there was no maintenance on that stretch of road on anybody's radar screen to this day. We've worked rather diligently. We've never taken our foot off the pedal and I'm, before you see, the most optimistic I've been in five years about the prospect of getting this sidewalk actually constructed. I make that assertion because Mass DOT appears poised to allow this project as a standalone sidewalk project into the Transportation Improvement Program Q, which is a first and is unprecedented. Usually in the TIP program, you're required to build sidewalks on both sides of the road and bike lanes, which make the footprint of doing such unattractive to most Cape communities. This is big news. It's, I think we're actually getting some traction for the first time in five years. And with that, I'd like to stop talking and turn the presentation over to Steve Rhodes, VHB engineer, who assisted us in applying for a Mass Works grant last year to fund this project. Steve did an excellent job for us then and is extremely familiar with it and put this presentation together with Griffin Ryder and myself. presentation together with Griffin Ryder and myself. So.
Thank you, Link. And we'll listen to Steve then.
Thank you, Link, and thank you to the board for the opportunity to present this project. We're very excited tonight to take all input and questions and hopefully give everyone some more information that they didn't have prior to come in tonight. Before I start, can everyone see my screen? Okay, and the presentation?
We can.
So there's a lot to, a lot of data here, a lot to go over. We're going to take questions and comments at the end after we, after I run through this information. It's not too long, I promise, it's 20 slides, so we'll get right through it. So this is an aerial image of the project area. We have Sacquetucket Harbor on the right side of the screen and part of Harwich Port on the left side of the screen. The project runs about six tenths of a mile from Bank Street to the harbor parking lot and it would propose building a minimum five foot wide, but typically six foot wide concrete and HMA sidewalk on the south side of Route 28. The project team is consisted of the town of Harwich, Harwich residents, Mass DOT, members of the Cape Cod Commission and my firm, VHB. As Link mentioned a little bit about a few minutes ago, there's quite a bit of history here. The board sent a letter to Mass DOT in April 2015, asking for the construction of the sidewalk. Mass DOT in turn provided a survey for a base plan of the, the project area to the town in 2018. The Mass Works grant application was then turned around and that was just one possible funding source for the construction of the project. VHB began conceptual design work in October of 2018 and all while that was going on, there's been ongoing discussions and outreach with, with Mass DOT from the town and from the town with community engagement. There's been a large increase in pedestrian traffic recently to the Sacquetucket Harbor area. This is in main parts of the town's large investment in the harbor. And on the other side of Route 28, the Our Cape Health Facility was recently upgraded there. So there's currently a lack of consistent ADA compliant pedestrian facility from the harbor to Harwich Port. And that's one of the main needs for this project. Another more overarching goal is to just improve the safety of the corridor in general for all users. Going to walk through a few photos of the corridor. This is starting at Bank Street and the project would most likely update all four corners of this intersection. There's sidewalk facilities and ramp facilities here, but they're in need of some, some upgrades. Walking down to the east, this is, this photo is taken just to the west of Snowin Road and Freeman Street and the sidewalk starts to lose, the existing sidewalk starts to lose a little bit of definition here. There's a pull off for some mailboxes. It's kind of a gravel area. There might be an HMA sidewalk surface under there, under that dirt. And then from that same point, this is the same photo or a new photo looking east and you can see a little bit of the existing facility there heading towards Snowin Road. After that, the sidewalk drops away completely and we are introduced to a somewhat of a worn path. So you can see that pedestrians are trying to use a corridor to get down to the harbor area or to any of the side roads that are off of Route 28 here. This is getting closer to the harbor, just looking down the hill. This area is one of the few spots that would require some potential easements for the project to be installed. What's happening here is that there's a potential for a pedestrian bridge, a short pedestrian bridge stand to be installed over this brook that's running into the harbor. And it would likely be to the right of that utility pole you see there. So it pushes a little bit further away from the roadway. Nothing is set in stone with this, that's just our conceptual plan at this point. The project at this point is potentially going to become a state funded TIP project. And if it does go that route, it would go through a extensive Mass DOT backed right-of-way review process. And, and the needs would be addressed through Mass DOT as it's, as it's their roadway. This photo is taken from the Brax parking lot looking to the west. This kind of illustrates a little bit more of the site constraints that you can see in the, to the left side of the photo, the utility poles, the shrubs that Brax likely maintains. One option right now is, is to put the sidewalk to the left of the shrubs to maintain that line. That would require a easement action because that is actually, to the left of the shrubs is on the property that Brax owns. Another option could be Mass DOT may elect to move the poles further back within their right-of-way and then the sidewalk could be installed along the, the edge of the roadway. And this is a photo just looking at the harbor parking lot. This is where the project would end and tie into the existing facilities at the harbor. Back to the graphic, it's a little bit hard to see here, but if you can pick up some of the color coding on the, the south side of Route 28, there's a few opportunities throughout the corridor for grass strips to be proposed or, or maintained between the road edge itself and the sidewalk. For the most part, the corridor is pretty, pretty constrained for space. So we're looking at installing the sidewalk up against granite curbing. And another factor in that is the right-of-way width that exists out there for the public space. And that's typically about 40 feet wide from end to end, from, from east to west. So to summarize the improvements, it's a new six foot wide cement concrete and asphalt sidewalk. The details of where the cement concrete and the asphalt are still to be determined, but we, we know there's some existing cement concrete sidewalks down in the Harwich Port area that could be reconstructed. They could also be put back as asphalt. That's kind of the prevailing, prevailing preference there. The edge treatment is going to be primarily granite curb. There's going to be some drainage upgrades that are, that would be installed as a result of the, the project. With the curb that's going in, the stormwater that would have sheeted off the roadway and kind of drained on its own outside of some of the existing drainage areas is going to be captured and brought to those drainage areas a little bit more. So we need to improve the, the underground stormwater facilities. And then the other big component that I mentioned is the potential for the pedestrian bridge over the culvert that carries the brook into the, into the harbor. So costs, right now, we're looking at approximately $225,000 in engineering costs. In 2018, the town appropriated $250,000 to cover these costs. The current construction estimate is just under $800,000 and you can see I've listed out some of the major components of that cost here. Other items of work would include erosion control, earthwork, loam and grass reestablishment, temporary traffic control and, and other contingencies, but these are the main, the main pieces here. And then if the project is to follow a Mass DOT TIP process for funding, the typical cost split would be the town is responsible for the cost of the design and Mass DOT is responsible for the cost of the construction. For a schedule, just last week, the Cape Cod Commission submitted a project need form to Mass DOT on behalf of the town. The next step will be for Mass DOT's project review committee to look over that application and determine if the project is indeed eligible for, for TIP funding. At that point, regardless of the direction there, the plan is to start the 25%, the preliminary design of the, of the sidewalk installation in the spring and summer of '21. And then the construction year is still to be determined. For a typical TIP project, it's about five years from the date that CT accepts the project. But with a project of this size, there's, there's opportunities to accelerate that and potentially be, you know, under a five-year window. At this point, we'd be happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board and then we'll get outside. Michael?
Ed?
No.
Don?
Just to be emphatic, especially since a lot of folks still remember 124, this, this is just the sidewalk. It's not a bike lane or, or two sidewalks. It's not a hybrid of anything, it's just the sidewalk. Correct?
Correct. That's correct. Yep, we've had discussions, very recent discussions, because Mass DOT just released new policy guidance, in fact, over the past few months on updating their, their bicycle and pedestrian guidelines. And we've had discussions with Mass DOT, the Mass DOT district, five staff have taken that to the Boston headquarters and discussed the desired project, which is just a sidewalk on the south side of the road. And the early indications are that waivers will be granted to install just that.
Thank you. Joe, do you have additional comments before we open it up?
None of mine, no.
Thank you. Griffin?
Steve hit everything that, that we need to talk about. I'm, I think I, really what we're here for is, you know, in, you know, in order for Mass DOT to, you know, push this project forward, they want to make sure that we have the appropriate public support for the project. So tonight, we wanted to open it up to questions and comments from the public to, you know, we want to hear comments, we want to hear concerns about this, you know, not, we don't have all the answers right now at this time. As part of the design project, process with Mass DOT, you know, a lot of these, these details will be ironed out, but this is currently where we're at and, you know, we have a good concept. We think that the impacts to right-of-way will be, be relatively minimal. You know, we'll continue to minimize those as we work through the design process and, you know, as to Don's, to Mr. How's point, you know, throughout this process, both Link and I have been very adamant that if we are forced to do more than one sidewalk, more than one sidewalk on one side of the road, we probably don't have a project because I think at that point, we really lose our public support. So, you know, we're, we're hoping that Mass DOT can, can step up and really, really help us out here and, and, you know, provide safety that's much needed on this corridor. You know, we've also worked closely with the Cape Cod Commission to, to get their support and, and have them help us with this process as well. So with that, I'm, I'd like, happy to answer questions or hear comments from, from the public.
Okay, let's ask a question or comment first and then I'll turn it over.
Why don't you take Steve first?
Larry?
Steve?
Yeah, I, I just want to add in that there is an effort on several levels to get in touch with Governor Baker and, and make sure that the governor understands how important this is to our town, both economically and from the perspective of safety relative to people walking down that Route 28 corridor. As was pointed out in the slides, there are numerous people every day that walk down and wore that path along the side and it is very dangerous. So there are a number of initiatives to try to make sure that the governor is aware of this and perhaps could help us move this up from a five-year time horizon to a much shorter one. And we're hopeful that something will happen in that regard.
Thank you, Steve. Ed?
Yeah, I, you know, if you're asking at this point for comments and concerns, I know that in typical sidewalk design along a roadway like this, if you can't provide a vegetated strip of two feet between the roadway and, and the sidewalk, you need to have a curbing, which I understand. It does, curbing that does prevent cars from being able to pull off, off the road in case of an emergency vehicle coming by, which is unfortunate. But one of my concerns is in the strip along where it passes by the overlook at Wichmer Harbor, if the, is to make, make sure that the sidewalk can go into the, the overlook property in such a way so there is still an area for cars to pull off the road, for people to get out and take, you know, take in the sights, so to speak.
Ed, that's a good point. Larry, if I may, Ed, that's a good point that you bring up and that's one that we, we've been talking about over the last couple of weeks. You know, there's a couple of challenges with this project, but challenges bring opportunities. One of the challenges is getting over that, the culvert there where Cold Brook comes out, but then also, you know, getting, getting through that Wichmer overlook. And, you know, we need to develop a way that the, the pull off and, and the sidewalk can all work in concert and also be acceptable to Mass DOT. But that, you know, that's a, that, that view is a jewel to, to folks of Harwich and I see folks pulled over there, you know, eating lunch almost every day. So that is something that will be taken into account as, as the design moves forward.
Okay. Let me open it up now for a public comment and let me plead with each of you, questions, ask your questions. I would ask if you're, there's a number of you may all be supporting it, for instance. Don't repeat if someone else has made your point. We'd be comfortable with a simple comment that you also supported rather than repeat someone else's, same way if people have concerns. So we can keep the order. And Jamie, I'll.
Susan Thomas is first.
Who, pardon?
Susan Thomas is first.
All right, thank you. Jamie, I'll just let you introduce the people, if you will.
They can't hear me.
Okay. Susan Thomas is first.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so tonight I'm representing the Sacquetucket Bluffs Association and the South Howard Shore Association. Collectively, that's 73 families and 74 households. One person owns two properties. Everyone, without exception, in these properties has been in favor of the proposed sidewalk. I'm going to read you just a few of the comments that I got this week. These are all quotes. "It will probably take a tragic accident to happen before anything is done at this point. Before COVID-19, when we were all out and about, it was a very dangerous stretch of road. During the day, walkers were scarcely close to the road and at night, service industry workers on bicycles made me extremely nervous. I prayed for everyone's safety, but was always uncomfortable. It can't happen fast enough. It would be wonderful to have a few pluses and all of the distressing news this past year." And it goes on and on. Many, many comments, all in favor of this sidewalk. On a personal note, in July of 2019, I reached out to Matt Hart, because I knew Matt from the Waterways Committee. I asked him who I should speak with about the sidewalk issue. My husband and I, on several occasions, had walked into town from the Sacquetucket Neal Road area and took our lives in our hands every single time and it was frightening. So Matt had told me, he directed me to who to speak with, but in addition to that, he said that it was just a coincidence that that morning, he had actually stopped traffic for two women with double strollers who were walking along the area and he was afraid they were going to be hit. Then on August 4th, I actually was driving westbound past Brax area in Cold Creek. There was a woman with a double stroller coming eastbound. A truck came over the rise and almost hit her. He had to swerve. I swerved to the right so he could come into my lane and it just took my breath away. It was terrifying. So the next day, I sent a letter to Governor Charlie Baker and Stephanie Pollak, who's the CEO of Mass DOT, with CCs to Chris Clark, who at the town was, as you know, the town administrator, Sarah Peak, the Mass State Representative, and Julian Sur, the Mass State Senator. And in addition to that, sent letters to the South Howard Shore and SBA members, asking them to also write letters. Several people did do that. Then on August 27th, Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito came to Sacquetucket Harbor. She introduced me to a gentleman named Dan Gates, who was nice enough to walk down to the area with me. All of these people agreed that yes, it was a terrible area and that safety should, should rule, but then nothing happened. So I am absolutely delighted to think that the, maybe through the TIP program, we will be able to put this sidewalk in. It's, it's, safety is number one. I don't want to see what happened in, you know, behind the Hyanna Mall where somebody had to get killed first before they put the sidewalk in. I'd like to see a sidewalk in before we have a major accident. And in addition to that, I think that there are economic ramifications here. I think a connection between the harbor and the town will be great for business, great for tourism. I think it will be a beautiful addition to our town, but number one on my list is safety. And I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thomas Dorley.
Thomas Dorley is next.
I, I got that. I support what Sue says and it's, it's totally fine and I agree with that and the safety issue is important. The issue I'd like to, to emphasize is. with that. And the safety issue is important. The issue I'd like to emphasize is first to compliment the selectmen, the Harwich master, for the wonderful work you have done in terms of building the Sacquetucket Harbor Marina into an asset for the town. That is a tremendously positive thing, helps the town, and has great economic benefit. I think the same thing can be said about the sidewalk. The sidewalk connecting the harbor and connecting the people walking from the harbor into the town, to the wonderful restaurants, and now the new marketplace that's open there, has a tremendous positive and would once again represent, for all of us, an asset to the town. So I complimented you all for the work you did to bring into fruition the Sacquetucket Harbor Marina. I compliment you again for taking this forward. It is a brilliant move. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Peter Lipscomb? Peter, are you...
Hello, my name's Pete.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Pete Lipscomb. I'm 11 years old, and I'm an advocate for having a sidewalk on Route 28. I, two years ago, I wrote to the governor about this issue, and he wrote back saying, keep this in mind. What's not good is how nothing has happened since then. I live between Harbor Road and Colonial Way, but unfortunately, whenever I try and walk or bike into town, to tennis or to my grandparents and cousins who live off Neal Road and Sacquetucket Bluffs, my mother fears for her life. Any day, some reckless driver or a big truck with those big boats on their trailers could come and hit me or my friends, or just anyone who chooses to walk that small gravelly dirt path, two feet from the fast-moving traffic. There would also be benefits to the town. It can make coming and walking around Harwichport more safe and friendly. It can also help create business for the newly opened and renovated Sacquetucket Harbor and Dockside Restaurant, among others. Not only could it be good for people's physical health when running, walking, or biking, it could also help the climate in some ways. More people could bike, run, or walk, eliminating some pollution from cars and keeping our town and ocean safe and clean. Overall, a sidewalk could be a good benefit to our ever-growing town and add to the great things of Harwichport. On behalf of all the kids of Harwichport, I'd like to ask the town selectmen to move forward with the sidewalk project. Thank you.
Very well said, Pete. Thank you very much.
Karen Larson.
Karen, you're up next. Can you hear me, Karen? You may be muted.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Okay. I am going to point out a factor of the location of our two ports are the only ones that are accessible directly from Route 28 along the whole south coast, even down to Felmas. This is a definite connection of our ports to Harwich Port. And I think in terms of the ability to be able to walk from the port to the two ports is something that allows for some good publicity, and this will be a great advantage to our town. And I'm so happy for the person who just spoke, and he got the ball rolling with the governor. So it's terrific, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing for this.
Thank you, Karen.
So, yeah.
Alan and Lois Young? Bob Hall? Help me out, Jamie. Who's... Bob Hall, are you available to speak?
Yeah, I'm here.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate just one moment. I'll echo Susan's comments. I've lived on Julian Road for 15 years, and we have a broad-based support for this. We've all hoped for it. We all walk this pattern all year long. I run it almost daily. So thank you for all the hard work and heavy lifting everyone's done. Obviously, safety's our biggest concern. I wouldn't want to do anything to delay getting this done. We sure hope people would consider whether you can run it to the top of Julian and also capture traffic into Red River and to Sunday School, or Schoolhouse, excuse me. And I don't know if that's even remotely possible, but we would love it to go a little further for all the traffic that makes its way down there to the beach. So we'd open that up for suggestion. Of course, we would hate to see this delayed, so we're very careful about that. Thank you for considering. And I'd love a response to that question, if you could.
My only response is, I agree, it's a great start to go to Sacquetucket. I join you in hoping that we go to Julian, so you could go, you could walk to Red River Beach, make that whole Harwichport connect to the beach itself. But I think probably we'll take one step at a time and move this as quickly as we can.
Okay, appreciate that. And again, we're just talking about the top of Julian, not all the way down to Red River. But there's just a lot of traffic that makes its way up through that neighborhood and into town. But again, please consider it, and thank you for the big work here. We're very excited about this.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Roland and Melody? Cheryl Stone?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to join my voice with Sue Tommich's, Tom Dorley's, and all those from Sacquetucket Bluffs and the South Shore Association who support the sidewalk. We are year-round residents and make the walk often, have the same feeling of danger as we do it, and can't say enough about the forward motion of the decisions that have been made, both by the creation of the harbor and the changes there, and all of the improvements in town. So I think this is just the next step for us, and at a time when we're looking for hopeful signs, this is a beauty. So thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments. Jim Ferry? Jim, are you with us?
Just as a note, Jim sent his comments in written. He said he would not be able to make it.
All right. Ed? Lucuna? Did I pronounce that correctly? No, same will. Rebecca Koenig?
Yes, thank you. It's Rebecca Koenig, Harbor Road in Harwichport. And I just wanted to also express my broad-based support for the sidewalk project. I don't want to reiterate things that have already been stated. I think the safety issue is very loud and clear. The quality of life is loud and clear. Being one of those grandmothers who tried to walk a double stroller, and with my mother in a wheelchair, I can tell you, it was no easy feat. And you had to cross the road onto the busy side, and kind of abandoned all the hope of both of those endeavors because it was so indeed, so dangerous. So thank you, everybody, for the work that you're doing. I think that this will really enhance the town's appeal, and I think it will get us all moving more, fewer cars, less traffic, and hopefully, coming down that hill toward Brax Landing where cars speed down that hill, hopefully, it will slow that down as well. So I, for one, look forward to having this come to fruition, and I'm happy to work on it as needed. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Peter Shrek?
Then Ann Stewart.
Okay, we'll move to Ann Stewart. Ann, are you online? Be sure you're unmuted.
Next is Elizabeth Mayhar.
Beth Mayhar? You wish a comment? We'll move on. Lori O'Connor? Maybe David Ferrer?
Yes. Hello, everybody. Very quickly, selectmen, Link, Griffin, Steve, this is all fabulous. I'm a Neal Road resident, president of our South Howard Shore Association, but Sue's representing us in this call, very much in favor of the project and excited by it. And like the halls, just note that if there's any possibility of extending further, whether to Neal Road, or as the halls also note, all the way to Julian, that that's high-traffic area, high-speed area. I think it would aid traffic safety, especially around Schoolhouse Ice Cream and the restaurants and facilities between Neal Road and Julian. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristen Young?
Hi. So my husband Joe and I live on the south side of 28, actually, where, along where the sidewalk would be going. We currently have an existing sidewalk in front of our house. We're, you know, very supportive of this project. One of the things we wanted to ask about, one of the earlier speakers had mentioned the speed at which people are traveling. And I imagine now that, you know, if sidewalks are going to be in place, that there will be even more pedestrian traffic going back and forth between the harbor. And I'm wondering if there would be any consideration to reducing the side, the speed limit along that stretch of road where there is a curb and there's, you know, the roadway's sort of narrow there anyway, or if there'd be any consideration given to looking at that.
Thank you. That's a good comment. In the past, we've been unsuccessful because it's a state road, and they, but we never give up hope. The speed is an issue there. Griffin, you have any comments on what options may be as speed limits or calming devices?
Yeah. Larry, I would actually, I would defer to Steve Rhodes on that. I mean, I think it's part of a typical TIP process, you know, often, you know, when you're talking about safety and safety improvements, speed is often looked at. Sometimes, when you do speed studies, the results are less desirable than you expect, you know. So I think I'm all for reducing speeds. And also sometimes, that, you know, I know, we try and establish soft edges, especially on Cape Cod where we can. You know, we're not big fans of vertical granite curb and whatnot, but oftentimes, that vertical granite curb can help to reduce speed. So, you know, I know in this, for this project, we would be looking to do soft edges wherever we could, but where, you know, right-of-way might not allow for that, we may need to go with some harder granite edges. And that may help with speed a little bit, but I defer to Steve, if he has any additional comments on speed and working through the TIP process.
Thanks, Griffin. Yeah, I would say your initial comment that sometimes a speed study can kind of do the reverse of what it's intended is sometimes true. That said, I think anytime there's a major change to a corridor, MassDOT would consider looking at a speed study to see what the new behavior is like. And that might make sense to do after the sidewalk is constructed and in for at least a season, to see how people adjust to the road. And if there's a sense that people are slowing down a little bit more, you know, that's good as a first step, then at that point, it might make sense to request MassDOT to initiate a speed study, an engineering study that could back up an official change of the speed limit on the corridor.
Thank you.
And if I can just chime in one more time, Larry, and there may be an opportunity in the future to do it a little more comprehensively, too, in terms of not just this one section. I know we've heard concerns about speed, you know, through the more commercial, you know, portion of Harwichport. You know, so I think it's not just this section of 28, it's all of 28. So, you know, maybe we look at encompassing a larger section and looking at it that way. And maybe it's not necessarily reducing speeds, per se, but installing some speed mitigation measures, whether it's by, you know, where we have crosswalks, having bump outs and things like. There might be some other traffic calming measures that we might be able to work with MassDOT on to help that process. Because we have heard that concern, not just in this area, but other areas along 28 as well.
Thank you very much. I think that does it for those who wanted to comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have a resident expert, an actual traffic engineer, on the line with Steve Tupper from the Cape Cod Commission. He may have a different perspective, I'm not aware, but he has assisted the town on several instances in doing speed studies in trying to get traffic speed limits lowered. I don't know if he cares to chime in or not.
Okay, we'll give him the opportunity.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the chair. Again, as Link introduced, my name is Stephen Tupper. I'm the Transportation Program Manager at the Cape Cod Commission. So certainly, we have worked with the town in other instances where there's been questions about a speed limit on the roadway. I'll echo what both Griffin and Steve said. It's certainly worth taking a look when this changes to characters of the roadway. And in this case, I think all indications are that adding the sidewalk would help encourage folks to drive a bit slower. So we'd certainly be happy to go out there and take an informal look at speeds to give a sense of what's going on. And then the town can consider whether they want to submit a formal request for a speed analysis by the state. It's always good to go and look and kind of see what's going on before you ask the question. So always helpful to, always happy to help out there. And then maybe if you'd allow me, Mr. Chair, while I have the floor, I'd just also like to say that I just wanted to thank VHB and Griffin for the great presentation there. We've been helping out the town with any input in terms of the TIP process. And Link assured me there's great town support for this project. So very happy to come tonight and hear great support from many individuals spoken, that were spoken tonight, and also represented more broadly. So myself is on the call, also Colleen Mederos from our staff is on the call. So just know that Cape Cod Commission staff are behind-town staff on this, certainly willing to help out with any of the process of the Transportation Improvement Program. We'd really like to see this project come to fruition. It's certainly important from a regional perspective as well, making that important connection on Route 28. So really, just wanted to reiterate again our support, and happy to hear all of the great comments from the public tonight.
Thank you, Steve, for your support and working with Link and Griffin and Steve at VHB. We're, I think that does it for the comments, but Ed, one...
Well, I guess one other comment I'd like to make to Griffin and Steve and Link, as you start looking at designing this project, one of the considerations I know that I have as both a patient and a member of the board of Outer Cape Health, it would be nice if, as you do the design, if down at that end at Sacquetucket Harbor and across the street at Outer Cape Health, a bus turnout could be added in the design to provide better access both to the harbor, but also to the medical facility.
Okay, thank you, Ed. And I think that the only conclusion I would say is, is that most of us on the board have been pressing this for more years than I care to admit to. And this is the first time we've had, as Griffin has said, or Link, forget who made this, but that we think we're going somewhere. So we're going to keep working and appreciate all your work on this with Joe and others. And my last comment would be that for you called in, that we welcome any other comments as the project moves ahead. Just email, I would suggest email Joe Powers, actually, with comments, and then they'll get to us. But our chore of the time is to keep this pressure on and see if we can get it done as quickly as we can.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we move on, just to ask Griffin to walk us through what you see as next steps after this excellent example of community support. Where do we go from here, building off of this meeting?
So, if I may, from here, the next steps would be, I think Steve highlighted a little bit in his slides, would be going to the PRC, which is the Project Review Commission, which is MassDOT through MassDOT. They meet at... They meet at, you know, mid-January, I think January 22nd or something like that, somewhere around there. At that point, they would vote to, you know, basically accept the project or to support the project. And this, this public support will be a big portion of that as well. So, you know, if they choose to support the project, then it would be kind of up to the town to engage the design consultant, likely to be VHB since they've done so much work so far, to move forward with the design and get us into the tip process. Which is, you know, there's, it's a few-year process as was mentioned, but basically get that, get that ball rolling with the tip process.
Thank you, Griffin. Ed?
Griffin, as you indicated, for that process, knowing that there's good public support behind the project is important. Is there, at an appropriate time, can we make the appropriate address an individual or committee known for the public to send letters to?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think if the public wants to submit letters of support now, they could, they could do that now, just to either administration or engineering. I mean, I'd be happy to collect, collect all of that. One thing I did want to mention that I didn't is, is, you know, this is not by any means the last opportunity for the public to provide input. You know, as we move forward, you know, with the tip process, there, you know, as we get through the design stages at 25% design, there's typically a design public hearing. And at that point, you have, we have, we would have more answers in terms of the design details and impacts and widths of sidewalks and, you know, where exactly we're doing granite curb and things like that, you know. So, so this is just one step in the process. You know, we want to make sure we have support every step along the way. But this is, this is one of the first, the first steps.
Okay.
And along with writing letters to you indicating support, it would also be helpful if you, if folks could also write our state legislators, our state senator and state rep, it helps them in their advocacy with the state departments and the governor's office in advocating for this project.
And just to clarify, I think, you know, letters either to me, to the administration, or even to the Cape Cod Commission Joint Transportation Committee, I think those would be accepted as well. Steve Tupper, please tell me if I'm wrong.
Thank you, Griffin.
Through the chair, yes, certainly. Send letters my way as well and make sure to get that. The committee that Link, that Griffin referenced was directors from all of the towns that make decisions about the tip projects. So certainly at the appropriate times, we'll make sure that they get the information that there is public support. But always happy to take letters and queue them up for when they're most appropriate.
Okay. Thank you all. Again, great presentation and we really appreciate the public support as well. And we'll, we'll press this as we, as much as we can. Moving next to the next agenda item, Joe, is the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission Seminar. Your notes from that.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, right before that is a discussion and possible vote regarding a grant opportunity that just arose within the last several weeks. I believe Bob Young from Seal Pub is on the call. Bob was good enough to alert me to the fact that the Shared Streets, Shared Streets and Spaces Program, which had run throughout the summertime and had lapsed in October, was being reconstituted and reissued as the Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Grant Program. And it's a perfect opportunity, if the board is so willing, to have me submit an application for the grant that can come into bear on our front roadway, if you will, Harwitz Center, Main Street. And this would build off of an effort that goes back to at least two town meetings. But I know most recently, the May 2019 town meeting had identified a funding source under capital for $30,000 for the Harwitz Center ADA Sidewalk Project. And this was intended to be a town match towards grant. While we weren't able to participate in a grant program in 2019, I think the timing is perfect for us to consider this application. And it would come to bear on, and I don't know the official name and I apologize, but I know the site of the old Exchange Building, that little plaza there, we could impact upon that. The sidewalks coming off of the bike trail and the sidewalks in front of businesses here in Harwitz Center to account for greater ADA compliance and greater pedestrian traffic and activity supporting our center. That's my very quick Reader's Digest version of it. You have material in the packet regarding the program. But if you deem it appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I'd also defer to Mr. Young, who again brought this program to my attention.
Bob, you ready to speak to this?
Hi there. Thank you for taking a look at this tonight. As you know, restaurants, my business, I just opened it last February 7th. And I've had a lot of time to look at the streets and the sidewalks in Harwitz Center as to traffic or lack of it for part of the year. So this is also in conjunction with helping businesses survive. It's, it's the streets and the sidewalks too, but it also helps business to attract, like the bike path people. And frankly, the streets and the sidewalks, especially in Harwitz Center, are not in very good shape. And the crosswalks especially are almost invisible. So I would really urge you guys to take a look at this. It looks like the state is paying attention in an emergency way, sort of with businesses with this grant. And, but it has to work with business and the community to come up with some solutions for these sidewalks and crosswalks. And I think getting with the bike path is a natural step for the town.
Thank you, Bob. I would agree now. Joe, what you're seeking tonight is permission, if you will, to explore this grant, is that correct?
Well, actually, to go, yeah, go beyond, I think the exploration, if you will, has been done. And that's the information. I would just look for the board's consensus to move forward on this application, which is due a week from Friday.
Yeah, it certainly is positive to me.
Hey, Larry?
Steve, go ahead.
Larry? Yeah, I'd say, I'm part of the, you know, the initiative in Harwitz Center. And Bob had contacted me about this. I think this is a great idea and I think that we should support it and try to move it forward.
Thank you, Steve. Ed?
And having been, been part of the initiative back in 2002 and '03, and the plan that was developed for Harwitz Center, then I see this as an opportunity for us to start actually implementing some of that plan.
Don?
I'm beginning to feel like Ed's grandfather or something because I go back to 1995 with the Harwitz Center Initiative with Mike Petzalano. Nothing has happened. And that's been the story of government in a lot of places. This would be great if, if we could get this done. I mean, things are starting to happen in Harwitz Center and this would help them.
Michael?
I'm starting to feel like Ed and Don's great-great-grandson. I would say that I wanted to take the opportunity to say, first and foremost, it's well-needed. And I think that everyone's comments are saying, Joe, that we need to move forward on this. But I wanted to thank Bob Young for his participation in this. He's been, it was over a year ago, I got my first email from Bob with his own design of Harwitz Center. So you've, you've been at this, Bob, and thank you because people really need to be involved. And you've got a new business in Harwitz Center, which you seem to be doing great. And you're right, I think we need to direct as many people into Harwitz Center. But really, I really want to say I appreciate your support on this and how much work you've already done.
Thank you.
Enthusiastic support, by the way, Bob. But I would only comment that this also ties this into the recent grant that the schools got to generate sidewalks on the other side of town, but didn't come through to the library. So this matches up with some other programs who already are in place. So it's, it's a great move forward. And I only was in two Harwitz Initiative, by the way, so I don't know that as far as.
So I guess, Joe, is that enough of a consensus?
Absolutely.
No questions, thank you. 100% behind it. And Bob, I'm sure you'll keep after us if we don't move quickly on this, so.
I certainly will. Thank you.
I have no doubt. Thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Now we're going to consider Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission Seminar.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the first item will, or this item B relates to item C. But Danielle Delaney on staff, who as you know, has been handling licensing for the last several months, participated in an ABCC seminar held last Tuesday. And you can see the information that she's gleaned from that, that we've shared with licensees as we get into the renewal process. So the ABCC has received enough questions and inquiries from local licensing authorities and towns to have this seminar. And so what they've emphasized is, whether you're a restaurant or a package store, you're able to renew your license even if your business is not currently operating. And that's a reflection on what's happening with COVID-19. Any licensee who would not be operating at the start of the license year of 2021 would not have to provide any of the insurances or proofs of insurance and workers' comp until such time as they engage in the business. And then, of course, they're going to be continuing their ABC's orders on guidance on closures and everything else. But from this seminar, Danielle was able to get an answer to our question. As you see under item C, is with your regulations, you allow establishments to, to write to you as the licensing authority to tell you that they're looking to close for a period of time? And typically, the reason for that. So we asked the question, was there any prohibition on using COVID-19 as a reason for closure? And the ABC seminar participants or leaders indicated that they would look to the local licensing authorities for that. So it's helpful for us because your next request could be the first of several that we expect to see. And that is under item C, a request to close an establishment for close to a four-month period in relation to COVID-19. So the information that was gleaned at the seminar is already being shared with the licensees that are renewing and will continue to be shared if anyone comes in for application. And it will come to bear in the next action that you have. So just wanted to provide that detailed update on the seminar itself.
Questions for Joe? Joe, I have, I have one just clarification. The first statement is, is that we can start renewing licenses now, even if they're closed. And the next one is, they don't have to get insurance until they open. Mechanically, do you issue a license contention on the insurance when they're, when they're open? Is that how you handle that?
Well, no, typically, the way it's been in the past. So tomorrow is the internal deadline for the town to receive their signed applications for renewal. The fallback date is November 30th. So after the 30th, you'll start be doing, start to do renewals of these licenses. In the past, the ABCC has mandated that the signature application be applied, be supplied by November 30th with all of the workers' comp and all the certificates in place. Otherwise, it would be an incomplete application and would not be allowed for renewal. So this is a significant change where they can get their applications in, they can sign them, and the board can take action whether or not they're open and whether or not they plan to start right away with their insurances. So it's meant to be, it's inside baseball, but it's a great relief to staff and I think to all the applicants that they can get their licenses renewed and then as they determine the best time to reopen, then they would follow up.
And then you finalize this from that point, yes.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Ed?
Do you know, are these changes only in effect for this period where we have the pandemic going, or are these permanent changes?
No, they've indicated that these are responses to the pandemic for the next licensing year, starting January 1st.
Okay. We'll move on then to the, the next item that you've implied is, this uses background for. Don?
Given what we just heard, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the application from Damian Wiseman to close Moon Cussers from December 1st until April 1st.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? I'll take a roll call, Michael.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. You're right, Don, that made it an easy agenda item. Moving next to old business?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall, we had preliminary discussions on an administrative reorganization, administrative meaning related to personnel in accordance with the charter. I am proposing this evening a reorganization of the Administration Department. As you can see there in the memorandum, I have the authority to initiate a reorganization with the approval of at least three members of the board. As I've talked before, there are several components. I think it's appropriate to start with the first, which would be to reestablish the executive assistant roles in administration. As you may be aware, in the past, there was a role known as Support Staff Supervisor, which tied into the Community Development organizational structure. In conversations with department heads and staff, we recognize that the structure itself was never working as intended. So I'm recommending that we restore the Support Staff Supervisor from an OA-5 to an OA-4 and be listed as the Executive Assistant for Licensing. And if the board were to approve this, that means that both executive assistant roles in administration would be at the same grade and step.
Comments or questions?
Excuse me, sorry, same grade, not necessarily step.
Same, yep. Michael?
Thank you, Joe, for bringing this forward. And as you, as you mentioned, we did talk about this last week. I believe it was just an executive session. We didn't talk about this in open session, did we?
There we go, correct.
Joe, you know, we looked at some, some numbers last week. In the packet tonight, there's really nothing. And I guess my first question is, first, I'd say that I do, I think it's a good idea to make these roles uniform, as far as paid goes. So I do appreciate that. There's no compensation table present. So we're not really giving the public any information. More important to me, we voted or did consensus for your change based on a multi-part deal. Now we're being presented with one element of that multi-part deal. And I'm not seeing, and this was going to be a follow-up question, the insurance numbers, I believe, in the tables you gave us weren't included last week, benefits?
Say again?
The insurance benefits, the benefits package numbers were not in that table?
Right, that was simply deriving from the salary schedules in both SEIU and personal bylaws.
So I'd like to see, I would like to see what the, what the overall cost to the town would be. And then I would also like to see, by changing the name to Executive Assistance in Licensing, what's the job description? The current person doing that job is doing a heck of a lot more than licensing. So if I could look at a job description and kind of what you see as the differences, and I apologize for bringing this up tonight on your request to approve this, but I thought we'd be having several more conversations about this. And this is the fastest I've seen anything move in six years. So I appreciate the speed, but I, there was a lot of follow-up questions, Joe, that I had. And I'm a little concerned without looking at a job description that we're just putting that position as licensing, knowing that that person does a lot more than licensing.
Sure, would you be not inclined to support the reorganization? Is that where you're coming from?
I support the organization, I, I am supporting the reorganization, as I said last week. But I'm not, I don't know what the final numbers are. And again, I thought you, our vote last week was simply to support the reorganization. But that you were going to go have the conversations with who you needed to have the conversations with and needed the approval for us on the baseline of money and that we were thinking about the reorganization, not expecting that it would be back this week, that I couldn't ask more questions. So there was a series of things that I did want to ask.
Sure.
So tonight was a little premature for me, only for me.
If I could address the salary situation. By level-setting the position from an OA-5 to an OA-4, there's a savings of about $10,000 within administration. And so that was, that was derived from the chart. The other conversation is a secondary component. Because there was a Community Development organizational structure, the Support Staff Supervisor role that you created two years ago was meant to manage the clerical positions, the non-department head positions in each of the departments that were supported, organizational, excuse me, the Community Development Organization. That never happened. So that element's being removed from the job description. The job description actually mirrors what was done two years ago. The title was originally Administrative Secretary for Licensing. It's now being changed to Executive Assistant for Licensing. I can certainly share the two job descriptions. But as you all know better than I, both of those roles are meant to be complementary where one person may focus on administrative matters, the other focus on licensing. But the job descriptions that were created several years ago call for each other supporting the other role. So to me, this part of it... for each other supporting the other role. So, to me, this part of it, it creates the savings that can be used if other parts of it cost more money. And the last part of this would have been regarding the town planner, still engaged in conversations with the union that supports that position, and hope to have that part coming back very soon. They were built, however, they're related, but they can all stand on their own. So, if there's a concern that you don't have enough information for the town planner, I would assure you that whether you went from town planner to the proposal to director, that wouldn't impact on this reorganization, trying to restore what it was two years ago. I hope that's helpful.
Michael?
Just to follow up, the, Joe, on the, on this position, there's no union involved in this position?
Correct. The, both positions in administration fall under the Personnel Bylaws, which fall under the Administrator.
Okay. And then, other than trying to keep the pay scale uniform, don't we normally do, on all unions, we do, when we advertise a position, it's on a range based on experience?
Correct.
And on this, going from an OA-5 to an OA-4, that's a set range? We're not going to advertise a range?
No, if I may, the range is the steps, and there are 10 steps. This is simply the grade.
Okay.
So, when you look at the table, the grade of OA-4 presently says Executive Assistant to the Administrator. It would then say Executive Assistant to the Administrator, Executive Assistant Licensing. They're both at the same grade. Then, the steps follow from there, 1 through 10. And you're right, we may advertise the full range of steps, but it's never been the practice to start out at the top step.
Okay. And then, the, on the job description, Joe, so you're saying that all you're doing is reverting back to the job description two years ago, before we added, what we voted was a stipend position for that employee downstairs to take an extra role upstairs, which at that point got rolled into their salary by the pass down.
Precisely. Correct.
So, your, the, your intent is not to change the job description as it was two years ago. You're just removing the stipend.
Correct. The job description, so two years ago, you created a job title from an admin secretary for, to the Administrator, to an executive assistant to the Administrator. Rather than doing that for the licensing job, it went two steps up, if you will. It went beyond admin secretary to executive and went straight to a support staff supervisor. So, this action essentially creates what could have been created two years ago.
And then, the last question was, and you don't think it's limiting by using the word licensing based on the current role that the employee is?
Yeah. I don't because of the breadth of the job description, but also, quite frankly, I'm not creating anything new. This is what was already in place years prior.
And the job description allows for all the extra duties that this person is doing?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions, Ed? And then, Don?
I just had a letter to bring about the sidewalk thing.
Okay.
I just dropped that.
Yep. If you want to leave it right there, I can take that. Thank you.
Form of a paper plane.
I just realized it was today and not tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand Michael's concerns, and they're all valid. But the one thing I want to point out, I mean, it's kind of an understatement to say that it never got accomplished. It was a dark, almost incomprehensible format, where you had somebody physically unrelated to the rest of the workforce that they were presumably supervising, trying to coordinate their time off with the person that they really worked for. I mean, that never made any sense. This would clarify that and get us back to a reset.
I think the key word that both Michael and Joe use is, this is a stipend. Basically, it was a reason to reward someone for extra pay rather than a workable organizational function.
Stipend or not, though, it was, I mean, it was almost impossible to envision how it could work.
This gives us a chance to correct that.
Well, just to be upfront, that part doesn't concern me. I agree with Don 100%. That was not ever something that I wanted to support anyway. And I know it didn't work. It's really the title of licensing, which I had concern, that I think Joe just answered. And then, I did think we were going to have more conversations, see a job description and see the complete package, I should say, on pay and savings. But Joe's explaining.
Yeah. Okay. If no other discussion, I entertain a motion.
I move to support the request as submitted by the town, the interim town administrator.
Second.
Second. I'll take a roll call. Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Moving next to Town Administrator's Report.
So, Mr. Chairman, the main item I wanted to cover, I hope you received from staff information regarding the MMA Annual Meeting, which, as we all know, is going to be completely remote. And I know in years past, we've worked with staff to see if anyone wants to be registered. So, we're prepared to do that again. I would just ask through you if any members would indicate who's looking to be enrolled for that. We can take care of that administratively.
Okay. I do for one. Don?
I get a lot of information out of that, especially now that they're going to have seminars that you can recall on recording for a month. You can actually attend more than you could have if you'd gone.
Right. Ed?
Yeah.
Account me in, Joe. Michael?
I'll let you know.
Okay. Steve?
Account me in.
Okay. We have four and one, let you know.
So, we'll begin that process. And I would be looking to register as well.
Okay. Just for the record, as a registration fee is $75, is what we're committing to. Michael?
I thought it was 85, but the, one thing that we have said in the past is that we would have a follow-up meeting from this seminar, which I don't believe it happened last year. But this is a much different format, obviously, a lot less money to the town than going and staying in Boston for the weekend. But it would be nice if, after the seminar, people spoke about what they learned and shared, if we're not all taking the seminar, shared what we learned and what the town got out of spending the money on MMA.
So, we can put that in the tickler file. I think the meeting is leading into the long weekend, so we could do it at the first meeting after that, if you'd like.
Okay.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
We'll go to the Selectment Reports. Don?
We had the Housing Trust meeting last Thursday, and then I participated with Griffin on a call today relative to engineering for the possibility of building something at the top of Assistant Road, which is, as I said before, is the only thing we really were looking at. And I'll keep you apprised, but as it stands right now, we're going to get a soil analysis through a subcontractor from Mass Housing Partnership. And at that point, when we start getting serious about putting the RFP out, then we're going to start inviting the public to weigh in on what they'd like it to look like.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Don. Ed?
No.
Michael?
I have nothing.
Steve?
Nothing.
I just wish her, for one, a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
And I'd just reiterate and urge people to participate in the blood drive next Monday.
Joe, did you want to add something as well?
I can, it was just that, please sign the document. I didn't want to step on your Happy Thanksgiving wishes.
Might you do it, Jerry? Second.
Second. All favor. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.